The update by Chair Mr. Hunt. Mr. Hunt, good evening. So I usually begin these talks with a amazing statistic. And that is five thousand six hundred and thirty-five. My name is Rich Hunt. I'm twenty twenty-four Chair of the Library Board of Trustees, and this is our annual report. So first, we'll tell you a little bit about the board. If we can, there we go. So the board members are Rich Hunt, Nancy Oliver, Arietta, Michelle Ornott. Vice Chair is Mariana Guzardo. And Chair is Laney Pascal. That's different than the slide because we had an election last Thursday. Let me tell you a little bit about the board. Sorry, Alan. We're an advisory board, we recommend policy. We help with strategic planning. We do, or sounding board for staff ideas. And we suggested and endorse new ideas for strategic objectives. In twenty-four. We need to switch, Alan. Our, our goals were related to engagement, strategic plan support, annual events, board support and advocacy, and policy review. We have a work plan that encompasses these goals as well as the city's strategic objectives. I structured the rest of this talk based on these goals. Our first goal was engagement. The board continually encourages the library to form new partnerships with organizations throughout the Tri-Valley. And we've seen an increasing number of programs in which the, the library has partnered with other organizations. The Friends of the Library, of course, remains our most impactful partner. The partnership with the school district has increased this year because there's construction at Maryland Avenue School. So the Rincon Branch is actually Maryland Avenue Schools, School Library for the next many months. Strategic Plan Support. The board has encouraged the library to expand its literacy efforts beyond simply reading, but financial literacy, media literacy. You'll see the, the second of a media literacy lecture series up here on the slide. The board also asked the library to expand its storytimes, the range of offerings. So there's a Spanish language storytime, there's an American Sign Language storytime, there's a sensory storage time, there's even a yoga storage time at the Rincon Branch. You'll also note that Sycamore Grove Park now has a story walk, so you can actually take a hike and read a book at Sycamore Grove. Annual events, we're back to that five thousand six hundred and thirty-five. That's the number of people who participated in the summer learning program. That's a amazing number and a record for the summer learning program. Excuse me. So the kickoff party for the summer learning program was a combination birthday party for the Civic Center branch, twentieth birthday, and the kickoff for the summer learning program. There were bubbles, there were party hats, there were face painting. And birthday cupcakes, of course. Tommy Orange, the author of the Livermore Reads book, they're there, was invited to the library by one of our partners, the Native American Council. And people were just really happy to see an author actually show up to the library and talk about the book that they were reading. Board Support and Advocacy. We're trying to, to spend more of our time just meeting with people at library events and library programs. So the board is always at the library, talking to people. And outside the library, I know my Open Heart Kitchen colleagues were amazed at the amount of things that you can find in the library of things when I was talking to them while we were serving food one day. Board member Oliver Arietta meets with homeschoolers every Thursday in the storytime room. They have a gathering. Policy Review, we're reviewed two policies this past year, the display and exhibit policy and the meeting room policy and the corresponding library meeting room use permit. The next several slides are really pictures of library events that have gone on in the past year. You'll, you'll note the diversity and inclusion in all these events. And you'll know it also that they were everywhere. They were at events at each one of the branches, and there were events at parks throughout the city. I went to the Dia de los Muertos event at, at Rincon. It was cool, it was an awesome blend of resources for parents and fun things for the kids to do and tamale's too. So it was, it was a good day. We're going to step through these slides for you. And move on to numbers, one of my favorite things. There was almost a million checkouts from the library branches in twenty twenty-four. And more than three hundred and thirty thousand visitors to the library. That's about a ten percent increase over twenty twenty-three. Compared to twenty nineteen, pre-pandemic, in-person visits were down a little, but visits from the web were up a little. So putting the two together, twenty twenty-four was actually a little higher than twenty nineteen. And so we've noticed that there's sort of been a change in the way some people use the library. They're preferring electronic from home or from wherever rather than, than coming into the library. Volunteer hours continue to grow. There were eleven thousand volunteer hours in, in twenty twenty-four. That's about ten percent more than we're in twenty twenty-three. And program attendance has been huge, way more than pre-pandemic levels, about eighteen percent more than twenty nineteen. The next slide is just a little fun slide about what got checked out the most. And you'll, I'll note that there was a Dogman book that was the most checked out book in twenty nineteen for the kids also. So I'm going to have to go to the kids section and see what Dogman's all about. Our goals for twenty twenty-five are related to our work plan. And so library outreach for the community, advocacy on behalf of the library, policy review and feedback, equity, diversity and inclusion, and knowledge of local and state laws related to libraries. I refer you to our work plan if you want to know more details about, about those objectives. And that's all I have for you, thank you.
Very good, thank you, any questions? Wes Mir, Wes Mir Brining.
No questions, I just really want to reiterate something I've said to you before and to other members of the board. I just really want to give my deepest appreciation for all you do. Our library really punches above its weight for a city of our size and the budget that you have. You know, I always want to try to get you more money, but you know the challenge is there. But really, for, for what you're provided is incredible, the amount of programs, the amount of people you serve. And you really are more than almost anyone, kind of the way that people interact with the city. They may not always realize they're interacting with the city, but you know, it is the, the embodiment of good government service and good service of the community. And the library wouldn't be able to do it without you and our, the rest of the volunteer board members who really help us set the policy, set the tone, set the goals. So I just want to appreciate you and all the board members for all your hard work. And of course, the library staff for everything they do to support you. Thank you.
Yes. Congressman Wong.
I want to especially acknowledge the library's efforts in recent years to really get out into the community that you truck in carloads of books that people can check out at festivals. And the library is just really everywhere in our community, not just in the three branches. And I really appreciate that. Especially want to thank our library director, Dr. Anwan Baker's leadership. See him in the room back there.
Thank you, Chris.
This is a rhetorical question. This is for the, for the public. How many libraries does Dublin have?
It's a rhetorical question, so I don't have to answer, right? Actually, it has.
How about Pleasanton?
Pleasanton has one branch, and I believe Dublin has one branch. Dublin has, it's a county library. Yeah. And it's not a city library. Right.
How about San Ramon? You know, we, how many do we have?
We have three branches.
Yeah. So the point is that we have a lot of libraries and people. You know, sometimes we take for granted that everybody has a library. No, I was around, remember when Salinas shut their, their library down? They closed it all. Anyway, I appreciate, you know, the library, especially this one. One of my best friends used to just hang out there every day.
Thank you for the great work that you do. It's, as you know, I started out in a library and I have a great affection for the library and the programming. So thank you for what you do. Andrew Carnegie thought that this was so important that he gave libraries for free to communities that, that promised to support them. So thank you for the great work that you do and, and keep it up. Thank you. Okay, so with that, I'm going to reorder the agenda. We're going to move the open forum to after committee reports. And with that, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. Is there any item that anyone wishes to pull for, for comment on consent? No, we're consent.
What?
Consent is.
Oh.
So five point one and through is consent. We're going to be talking about six point one.
Okay.
That's the public key. Okay.
Nothing.
I have a just question, but I don't need to pull it on item five-two.
Five point two?
Five point two.
Okay. Your question?
I was just hoping, since it wasn't in the original packet, but it wasn't our supplemental, if we're capable of displaying the design, just so people can see. For anyone who's not aware, the item that I'm talking about is the construction that's going to be done at Flagpole Plaza. It's really a redesign of the space. It's going to support the outdoor dining in the space, really make it a lot easier for people to access the space, make it easier to move around. And so I thought, if possible, just showing the audience really quickly what's being done there would be nice.
Through the mayor, this is your city manager, Mariana Marsh of Vice Mayor. We will check to see if we could do that in the next couple of minutes while you go through the rest of the consent calendar.
Okay, if, if not, it is in the supplemental packet, people can check it out. And just for the audience, also, staff really worked very hard with Livermore Downtown Inc. and the businesses to try to make this minimally disruptive for the businesses during the construction because it will block off the area for a short amount of time. And we're trying to make sure it's as short as possible and as smooth as possible.
Okay, and I would just like to point out that some of the funding for this is measure BB funding. So that's your tax dollars at work. Livermore voted in favor of, or the county voted in favor of BB a few years back. And these are the measure BB dollars at work. So thank you very much for that. With that, if there's no further discussion on, we have any public comment?
No, sir, we don't. I can pull up the.
Oh, you got it? Cool.
And thank you for doing that. Be putting you a little bit on the spot there. And while that's coming up, I believe it, this will be breaking ground within a few weeks, is that correct? I'm getting head nods.
I see an affirmative nod out there.
So this will move quite quickly, so very exciting news. So I just want to give people opportunity to see kind of what's coming.
And Vice Mayor Brining, through the mayor, we typically post updates on these projects on the city's website. So if members of the public are interested in tracking this project, they can always check the city's website or contact us directly.
Thank you very much.
Okay, no other questions or comments?
One question was, anything special to move the meeting minutes that were provided in the supplemental? Or just great approval of consent is okay?
So actually, for the December ninth.
We'll need to move five point one minutes, two different approvals. Twelve-nine will be approved by myself, Vice Mayor Brining and Councilmember Barrientos. And then one-three will, one thirteen will be for everybody. So we'll need to have two separate motions. Do we have a motion?
Then should we do the rest of consent first and come back to that? Okay, then I move items five point two through five point six.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moving seconded, it's a, this is for.
This is five point two through five point six.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Actually, Mayor, sorry. It should be, it should include the January thirteenth.
Okay.
On five point one.
I was just.
January thirteenth, okay. So the minutes, because then everybody votes on that. So would you amend your motion?
I would amend my motion to include the January thirteenth minutes in five point one.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstain, pass unanimously for five point one. I will make the motion to approve. Is there, for the minutes of December ninth? Do we have a second from the Vice Mayor? Okay, any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Ms. Rivas, Councilmember Barrientos, all right? Okay, all right, pass, that passes with votes in the affirmative by myself, Vice Mayor Brining and Councilmember Barrientos. Got it?
I'm sorry, I was asking a question over here.
Oh, it passed unanimously with the votes of myself, Vice Mayor Brining and Councilmember Barrientos.
Yes, sir, thank you.
The three voted in favor, and then the previous was unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our first public hearing. It's a hearing to consider a request for a vesting tentative mat. This is item six point one.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Marshon, members of the city council. This is once again your city manager, Mariana Marshova. Item six point one is going to be presented by Emily Ladue, Assistant Planner in the Community Development Department. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Marshon and members of the city council. Tonight, I'll be presenting the proposed cornerstone project, which implements the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan. To provide a brief background, the city council readopted the Isabel Neighborhood Specific Plan and certified its supplemental EIR in November of twenty twenty. The specific plan intends to create a complete transit-oriented, walkable and bikeable neighborhood with increased housing and transportation opportunities. The subject property is proposed on the specific plan subarea two D, north of I-580 and west of Isabel Avenue. The project site is zoned village and center residential and zoned open space. The project site is just over thirteen acres, which will be developed for both residential and open space uses. The entitlements for this project include a vesting tentative track map subdivision, a site plan design review, and a conditional use permit. To orient you to the site, north is facing to the right side of the slide with Collier Canyon Road along the bottom of the screen and Constitution Drive and I-580 to the left. The proposal by Cornerstone consists of twenty-one townhome-style buildings that range from four to nine units and one five-story T-shaped apartment building located in the north corner of the site. A total of a hundred and forty-three for sale condominium units and a hundred and ten for rent apartment units are proposed. The project will provide a two-and-a-half acre public park, a point-four acre public pocket park, and a pedestrian and bike path that will run along Collier Canyon Creek with connections to Gateway Avenue and North Canyons Parkway. The project complies with the specific plan's zoning designations, minimum densities and development standards, apart from the requested state density bonus waivers and concessions, which I'll discuss further on a later slide. Because the project was found to be consistent with the specific plan and its certified supplemental EIR, the project is exempt from further analysis under the California Environmental Quality Act. Taking a closer look at the proposal, the site will be subdivided to accommodate the proposed buildings, common open space areas and the internal streets. The pedestrian connections throughout the site are shown as the red dotted line on the slide. The project also includes an easement for a future pedestrian bridge over Collier Canyon Creek with a trail extension into the public right-of-way north to North Canyons Parkway in compliance with the requirements of the specific plan. The project will also provide a double row of trees along the Collier Canyon frontage per specific plan requirements, which will serve to provide an attractive and shaded, shaded streetscape along the project frontage. The proposed townhomes have three architectural styles with, with two color schemes each. Each building type will be three stories with varying roof pitches with a maximum height of approximately forty feet, which will be compatible with the surrounding developments. The townhome design proposes contemporary farmhouse, craftsman and regency architectural styles, which are consistent with the specific plan. Key elements of these architectural styles include woodboard and batten or shingle siding, front-facing gables and covered front porches typical of the style. The apartment building design proposes a traditional architectural style with elements such as deep eaves, awnings and stone. The color palette of both product types includes a variety of rich earth tones that will blend well with the surrounding environment. All elevations are articulated with geometric patterns that define individual units while maintaining a cohesive overall design. The project's design details and architectural style conform to the specific plan as well as the citywide design standards and guidelines. Private open space will be provided to the townhome units via porches and balconies. The apartment units will have shared access to a private common space on the second floor. The project also proposes a two-and-a-half acre public park, a point-four acre public pocket park and a pedestrian and bike path adjacent to Collier Canyon Creek. Amenities of the large park include a play area, fitness area, and large multipurpose lawn for sports practices. Amenities in the pocket park include a community garden, bike parking and a small grass area. The trail along Collier Canyon Creek will be lighted and paved with a pervious material consistent with the open space easement. The project provides a hundred and fourteen affordable units, a hundred and eight of which are for rent and six of which are for sale. Of the rental units, twenty percent of the units will be reserved for low-income families, sixty percent for lower-income families, ten percent for very low-income families, and ten percent for extremely low-income families. All of the affordable for-sale units will be reserved for moderate-income families. Due to the size of the project, the applicant is required to provide wraparound services to the affordable units, which the applicant has carved out space for within the apartment building. With the approved waivers and concessions afforded by state density bonus law, staff believes that the intent of the affordability requirement is met. The applicant requested relief under both Senate Bill three thirty, the Housing Prices Act, and state density bonus laws. Because the overall project is forty-three percent affordable, it qualifies for three concessions and unlimited waivers through the density bonus law. Density bonus concessions allow deviation from standards that would result in a quantifiable cost reduction of the project. The requested concessions relate to deviating from the development code standards that require dispersion of affordable units throughout the project and the required percentage of for-sale affordable units. Density bonus waivers allow deviation from development standards that would physically prevent a project from reaching the required density. Four waivers are related to building design and scenic corridor views, and seven waivers are related to the comparability of the affordable for rent and for sale units to the for-sale market rate units. The project requests to use a waiver to exceed the scenic corridor height limit by twenty-one feet at the townhomes and eleven feet at the apartment building at the most. Based on the proposed project and state law, the requested waivers and concessions do not pose a public health and safety issue, do not impair a historic resource, and do result in a quantifiable cost reduction. And therefore, the city is obligated to grant the requested waivers and concessions. Overall, the project is providing forty-three percent affordability, which is more than double what the INSP requires, and units at a deeper level of affordability than required. At the December seventeenth meeting with this review of the project and its required entitlements, Planning Commission recommended that the city council adopt resolutions finding that the project is exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act, approving the entitlements subject to the conditions of approval, the requested density bonus waivers and concessions, and the no-net-loss findings, and direct the planning manager to file a notice of exemption in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. That concludes staff presentation, and we are available for questions. But first, the applicant team would like to say a few words about the project.
Hi, I'm Chris Stockhouse. I'm the lead pastor of Cornerstone Fellowship and the chairman of the board. And thank you for your time and consideration of this. Our core mission at Cornerstone, part of our core mission is to help support everyone in the Livermore community, but especially those who are struggling the most, especially those who are at the extremely low income level and the very low income level through the various services that we offer throughout the week, every week. And in our interaction with this group of people that we've been working with for years, one of the things we realized years ago that was at the top of the list of things most needed was housing. And we had this land that we weren't using, we originally were going to use as a parking lot. And as our vision changed, we didn't need to use it for that anymore. And so we felt like, years ago, the best thing we could do with this land is to add housing and specifically maximize the number of affordable housing units that were available. And as we were kind of working through what this potential plan would be, the city was working through the Isabel, the INSP. And our vision and interests were so aligned in terms of what we wanted to see in ways of supporting the community that it was, it was, it felt like it was meant to be in terms of what we were trying to do. And so our vision with this project is to, is to maximize the number of affordable units, especially at the lower income levels, is what we were trying to do from the very beginning, which is why it's designed the way it is. And, and so we feel like we have a plan that, that achieves it and is something that we were able to make the numbers work in terms of affording to be able to do it. So that's our, that's our vision, that was our, kind of our vision behind why we designed it and have it the way it is in partnership with the city. And we partnered with TruMark to help develop as well as specific companies. On the affordable side, they were key in helping make this, this vision closer to reality. So I'll hand it off to Mike with TruMark.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Mayor Marshon, and members of the council. My name is Michael Keeney, and I'm the Director of Forward Planning for TruMark Homes. I'd like to thank Chris for, for including us in the implementation of their vision for, for, for this site. And I'd like to thank staff for their thorough presentation and all of their help to move this project through the process. I, I don't need to get into the details because staff did a great job. So I'll just let you know that our consultant team is here to answer any questions you may have. And we think this is a great project that will add to the community and provide a mix of affordable and for-sale home and, 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 excuse me, market rate homes for the community. Thank you.
Questions from the council? Councilmember Brining, Barrientos?
I think he's a rumor. But anyway, what's the height of the highest building going to be built there, you know?
The maximum height is, for the building itself, sixty-one feet. And then there is a stairwell that goes up to seventy feet for a portion of the building.
And what's the last part?
A stairwell that goes up to seventy feet for a portion of the building.
Then most of the buildings are going to be under, what, forty feet or something?
The apartment building will be up to sixty-one and the remainder of the townhomes will be forty feet or less.
Do we, I'm not sure, do we have a policy of, of a height limit in Livermore? Or?
Yes, Councilmember Barrientos, this is Steve Riley, your planning manager. All of our zoning districts do have height limits in them around the city. It varies from whether it's a All of our zoning districts do have height limits in them around the city. It varies from whether it's a commercial or residential district. For example, residential height limits are thirty-five feet. So we do also have a special height standard along I five eighty called a scenic corridor. And there's policies in the general plan that limit the height of buildings near I five eighty to preserve views of the hills. So that would be, those are used in combination with the underlying zoning height limits to determine what height buildings can be.
How about, I see, you know, I see there's affordable housing and affordable, and I see little red stars. Is that where the affordable housing units are going to be?
Yes, so the red stars are showing where the affordable for sale will be each unit. There's six of them in the townhomes. And then the red star and outline is the one hundred percent affordable building to the north of the site.
So they're all kind of near the, what, what's the main road right there?
Collier Canyon Road.
So they're all near that. How many units are going to be all together in these red stars?
At each of the red stars in the townhomes, there's two units that are back to back. Those are the moderate units. And then there's a hundred and eight affordable apartments in that one building to the north of the site.
Oh, so that whole, because one of the concerns we were having before is that we are clustering and making it like, I don't know what, I don't want to use a word. Anyway, because I've seen areas where they become clustered and they kind of get run down quickly. And I just don't want people to go through. We know what this part of town is. You know what I mean? I don't want to use a certain word, but anyway, I just would like to see them spread out more than just clustered in one area. I know we thought about, I know developers don't like it because it costs them more to spread them out. Man, the whole idea is I'm trying to sprinkle that out throughout the throughout the development instead of, okay, we know what that area is. And I'm trying to be dramatic here. That was like, is my concern, that they're clustered.
Councilmember, this is Paul Spence, your assistant city manager. We do have requirements that units be affordable units be spread out throughout a development. In this case, the developer was able to use state density bonus waivers and concessions to avoid some of those city requirements. And under state law, the developer has the opportunity to do that and they've done that in this case.
And there's nothing we can do. But it's just, that's it?
That's correct.
Just to note that I had a meeting with the development team from the developers in my office at some point, just to go over it with them. It was just an informational meeting.
But you didn't get any additional information that we don't have?
No.
Okay. Any questions, Councilmember Rowan?
I did have an opportunity to ask most of my questions to staff. And I just, and my understanding is that, I mean, if we could, we'd build all of the housing in our city to not require any waivers and in order to build so many affordable units, especially at the real low income levels that we really need, desperately need, as all cities do in the Bay Area, that these waivers were really necessary and but also that we don't really have a choice, as Councilmember Beriantos pointed out. So, yeah, I just, I just wanted to make sure that that our residents understand that, that if we could, we'd build them without giving any waivers. But it's very hard to pencil out these affordable units without having to, and this is why the state law exists, is to really push cities to make these, this very needed housing possible.
I will save my comments for after.
Okay, all right. Got a few questions here. Okay, so this is affordable housing. Let me ask, so what, what is the income that will qualify someone for low income housing? Now, I know this, this low and it's extremely low and very low. So what is the income level for low income, just low income? I know, I think it's eighty percent of the median income?
Yes, that's correct. It's eighty percent of the median income, which for a four person household would be a hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred dollars is the income limit.
So it's over one hundred twenty thousand dollars, money I used to dream of making. And that classifies you as as low income.
Correct.
I think it's astonishing. People just don't really realize what that, what low income is. And the extremely low income is, I believe, thirty percent of the, and what is that?
Correct. For a four person household, extremely low income is forty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars.
So almost fifty grand is extremely low, low income. Okay, great. Thank you. Now, one of the things that we have learned with with low income households is there are frequently special needs for that population and there are services that are provided for those those residents. Do we have an idea who will be providing those services? Oh, I see.
So yes, the applicant is happy to.
Pastor, thank you.
So it's a, it's a combination of Pacific Companies who is, will be the developer on the affordable units. As they develop affordable housing similar to this, around the country, they offer wraparound services for units of this size. And they're going to partner with us, Cornerstone, because some of the services that are most needed in this community or we anticipate are most needed. We have teams that are already nonprofits that partner with us or Cornerstone directly are able to provide onsite services in the apartment building to meet the needs of the community. And that goes back to to our vision of why we want to do this in the first place. This isn't something we're tacking on because we're required to. It's something that is behind the heart of why we want to see this developed. Because those services are needed along with the housing as well, so.
Okay, and and just since I got you.
Yeah.
So this is one of the reasons to have all of the units in a single building is because that way you can localize those wraparound services for that population. Whereas if they were scattered throughout the development, you'd have to have satellite offices for those wraparound services in each building. But this way they're focused in a single building.
That's exactly right. And also, if we were to spread them out, we'd have less affordable units available just because of cost reasons. So the ability to do the extremely low would be less feasible financially if we didn't consolidate them. Yeah.
And just a quick point, and you're, you're very familiar with this population because of the work that Seek and Save and the other partners that you have at Cornerstone.
Yeah, it's Cornerstone and so many great partners like Seek and Save that we partner with just about every day of the week, different services going on. Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Okay, to the point about, you know, so Livermore is meeting its RENA numbers, the Regional Housing Needs Assessment numbers. So we're, we're meeting those. But one of the reasons that legislation like the Housing Crisis Act, I believe it's S B three thirty was passed, is because other cities were not doing their part. So this legislation was passed and that takes away a lot of the ability for the city to influence the planning. So these things like the the waivers and the concessions, those are put in place and the city doesn't have a lot of, a lot of leeway on how we deal with those. We, the state has mandated that, they mandate these concessions and these waivers. And we don't really have a choice in that matter, is my understanding.
Correct.
Okay. So, yeah, my next question is how many concessions and waivers are required to grant? And you already answered that one. I hear from residents, there are concerns over the demand for water and sewer services. So will this development be paying the the costs for the the water and the sewer fees?
There are development impact fees associated with development. They will also be annexing into the Community Facilities District to for funding to maintain the resources.
So there'll be a C F D up there as well?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. This development comes in at about twenty units to the acre. What's a similar sort of development, just to give people a sense of scale?
A similar development close by in that area as well would be Shea Sage and Shea Montage. Those are both already fully developed and they're about twenty acres to, or twenty units to the acre.
Condo type developments and townhomes. Okay, all right, great. So there are one hundred and ten apartments, one hundred and four parking spaces. But this is a one hundred percent affordable property at the apartments. What does the state require for parking?
The state would require half a parking space per unit since this is located within a quarter mile of, or excuse me, half a mile of a planned major transit stop, which is the Valley Link Station.
Okay, and also we also, there's a bus station about a half a mile away.
Yes.
Okay, so this is almost double the state requirement that's being provided.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Bear with me for a few moments here. So the staff report referenced the airport, and we've got an airport nearby. And just so everybody knows, the airport protection zone that we have is to protect the airport. It's not to protect people from the airport, it's to protect the airport. If people too close to the airport, they're going to complain and that could threaten the airport. So just to clarify that, but this is also near a freeway, so it's near the airport and the freeway. Will the developer being, putting in building mitigations to attenuate the sound? You know, building materials, double and triple pane windows, those sorts of things.
Yeah, so the developer will be required to meet the city standard of forty-five D B A interior noise levels. So they'll use construction methods such as sound rated windows, double pane windows to ensure that all the units meet that interior standard and we'll check that during the building permit process.
Okay, all right, good, good. And this development does comply with the city's Climate Action Plan goals regarding sustainability and part of building materials and the like.
Correct.
And I believe that each unit is going to have hookups for, or the possible hookups for electric vehicles. Is that correct?
Correct. They're meeting the electric vehicle building code standards.
Okay, very good. And it also provides over thirty percent more trees that are required. So that's a, it's a green development as well. One thing, one complaint that I had is the visuals were awful. Some of the visuals were terrible. There was like an ant's eye view on the pavement. And there was one elevation where as the elevation was blocked by a strategically placed bush. So if we could help a little, little, I'm a chemist, so I don't visualize things very well. It helps to have the renderings to support that. But I thought that was interesting. There was one rendering where the the top of it was at at noon and and the bottom one was at sunrise. And I thought that was really interesting. It was on page two sixteen. But it was, it was obvious the lighting was very different. Mike's going to take a look at it here. I thought that was really interesting because it was obvious that the timing was different. I just thought that was an interesting treatment on the, on the process. You got that? Two sixteen. So, all right, with that, if there's no other questions from the council, do we have public comment?
Yes, sir, we do. The first speaker is Brian Warner, followed by Julie Wild.
Good evening, council mayor. My name is Brian Warner. I'm here tonight representing over five hundred folks and union families here in Livermore, electrician, sheet metal workers, sprinkler fitters and plumbers. Many of us, myself included, actively participated in the community meetings that shaped the Isabella Neighborhood Plan. During the meetings, the council listened to the concerns raised and incorporated language in the plan to encourage the use of local construction workforce. The plan also emphasized the importance of supporting apprentices, including training at our state of the art facility right here in town. So including state approved apprentices in that that plan is what, what they pushed for, what you all pushed for. Just last year, Heritage signed an agreement with us ensuring these goals and plans were being realized and met. Currently, we're continuing negotiations with Trumark and Pacific Companies to secure a similar agreement. We're confident these discussions will lead to comparable outcome for the further plans objectives of including state approved apprentices on this project. We anticipate finalizing these agreements within the next month and we'll keep you updated as the progress continues. Thank you for your ongoing support and efforts.
The next speaker is Julie Wild.
Hello and good evening. So I had my comments prepared. I was here to basically support and agree with what Jean King had written for her Agenda Supplemental Material and just in in general, just opposing the cornerstone project as it's shown here. And when I looked at this originally, I felt that, you know, it's one building, it's in one location and it's for a very good cause. It's for low income housing is what's very important. And my initial concern was for the the five stories and the fact that we're Livermore, we're not Dublin. I think this is what makes Livermore special is that we do, we do put a lot of planning and thought into how we want our community to look. And this is kind of opening a Pandora's box that we can't close again once a five story building is built in Livermore. And again, it's for a very good reason, but yet it's something that I think we all need to really, the council should really think seriously about. But as I was listening to the presentation this evening, having everyone in one building, while it's nice to combine resources, it also stigmatizes people. And this is why the waiver is there, is so families and children that are there, they don't get classified as low income. This is why the waiver is there. So because we're not as a community willing to spend the money to move people around and put the, and follow this waiver of having low income housing spread out throughout Livermore and not just in one building, I think it's just, I think it's a mistake. And I think there are countless cities. I'm originally from Minneapolis and there's a huge high rise near the University of Minnesota campus. Ben didn't want to say it, but it becomes a ghetto. It was, it was a big problem for the city of Minneapolis for decades. And not that I want this to happen in Livermore, but we genuinely have to think about when you place all low income in one building. It just, it's not a good, it's not a good reason for this development. So, thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, with that, I'm going to close the public comment period and bring it back to the council. Vice Mayor, you had some comments?
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate my fellow council members' comments and the comments from the audience. Just to respond really quickly to Mr. Warner, I absolutely support us using local apprentices. I have spoken briefly with Cornerstone and Pastor Chris, and I know his intent for this project was not to make money. I believe it's actually costing the church quite a bit of money. I'm seeing a head nod there. They're working really to do as best as they can for the public good. And so I hope that the pastor and the development team really will seriously work on. Part of that is making sure local people get local jobs. So I want to thank you for that and encourage the team to do all they can to really support local labor.
With that, I just really want to address the project as a whole because we did get a letter asking for changes. And we had a commenter also come up, asking for us to change the project, look to make it different. Worried about the look or the feel or what the future might hold for this project. And personally, I would want to say that I'm fully in support of the project as it's proposed. I know that this goes a little bit, it's a little different from where we have seen things before, but it's not actually that different. We're talking about one extra story over many other buildings that we've built. And it is smaller than some of the tallest buildings we have in Livermore already. And really what this whole project was about is Cornerstone and their members coming together and saying, yes, in my backyard. yes, in my backyard. Literally, they said, we have land, it is here. And what is the maximum amount of good we can provide for this land? And in my conversations with them and my understanding as the project developed, my conversations with staff, the question they always asked was, how can we get more affordable units onto this land? What can we do to provide the maximum amount for the people with the most need? And so all of staff is fully aware of the challenges of building for the very low and extremely low. It's even a challenge to just build low units. But this project has quite a number of extremely low and very low. We have struggled and every city in the state has struggled to build housing at those levels. And every expert unilaterally agrees, all of them are not unilaterally unanimously agrees that housing at those income levels is the solution to our homelessness process, problem to people being unsheltered, to having people on the street. And this isn't costing the city anything to build. The concessions that are being asked for are not concessions that increase the cost to the city. They're concessions to try to fit more units onto the land. And so I bring all of this up just to make sure that people understand that when this is built, it's going to be the first building in the area, but we're going to see more construction in the area. We're going to see more come in. It's going to really build up the neighborhood and give it a feel. I don't want us to look at that building and say it's out of place and point fingers and stigmatize the building or the people inside of it. I want us to understand that this is the start of a neighborhood that really will incorporate all income levels, all different job types, all of the different people that make Livermore wonderful and really support our community. So I want to thank staff for their work. I know this was a challenging project to get through and there was a lot of work that went into it. And I want to thank Cornerstone for really having that guiding light of what more can we do for the entire project? And I cannot state how much I appreciate that. And I look forward to, as this is built, seeing the work that you and your members are going to do to really make sure that the residents there feel welcomed and lifted up. And so I thank you for your work. I am fully in support of this project and I appreciate everything that's gone into it. Thank you.
Any other comments from the council? Councilmember Dunbar?
Good evening and thank you for the comments. Thank you to staff for answering a number of questions over the last few days from me to make sure that I understood all of the context of this. Having come from the planning commission and seen a lot of the Isabella neighborhood built out or yet proposed over the last few years. These conditions are not unexpected to me. We've seen many waivers and concessions of this type before that resulted in a change to the type of unit, the affordability of the unit being not exactly identical to the, and that, that is a waiver. Like that, it's a waiver for a reason. It's not something that we normally would allow, but we are, we are forced to provide it because it allows the, this type of building to get built. And one of the questions that I asked staff was if this project was proposed at the townhome level with the lowest minimum density of this site overall, what would be the result of A, our net loss and B, the types of affordability that we'd actually get? Would staff care to answer that for the public's knowledge?
Yes. And so if the project was proposed at the townhome level density with twenty percent affordability, there would be no proposed lower income units as the specific plan only requires the median and moderate units. And that would result in a deficit of a hundred and seventy-three lower income units, which would not be captured by the citywide surplus of a hundred and twenty, which would force us to rezone.
And can you go over the, how that rezoning works when we have a net loss problem, just for everyone's understanding?
Yeah, so the process would be, as Ms. Ladoo described, we'd have a no net loss, meaning, we'd have net loss, excuse me, meaning we have to make up those affordable units somewhere else in the city. So we'd have to go and work with staff, the council and landlords to find another site in the city or sites to rezone to residential to allow development of more lower income units that we don't currently have zoned for residential. So it's a fairly long process.
And the timeline is very fast, right? It's sixty days or something in that range of things.
Yeah.
So we'd have to quickly rezone some other.
Yeah, I think it's a hundred and eighty days we have to rezone and, and it's a lot of work to do in a hundred and eighty days.
Thank you. I've looked over the project intensively. I still have my planning commission hat on and find that it is compliant with all our rules and standards with regards to the design and the layout. Waivers and concessions notwithstanding, it is going to be a lovely project in a lot of ways. The townhouses look very nice. I don't have a, I don't have a balcony in my townhouse, but I'm sure people will enjoy the space that they have. I wanted to point, to point out the, the conversation that Mayor Marchand was alluding to at the very beginning, which is within that one building that is a hundred percent affordable, we are going to have a range of incomes between thirty-one thousand for a single extremely low income and over a hundred and fifty thousand for a family of four low. That's a, that is a very wide range. That is not very targeted at all, actually, relative to the incomes we see here in the city of Livermore. So it will be a very diverse building in its income range, but also in many other ways as well. So I, I don't have any reason to believe that there will be a stigma attached to who lives in that building. I wanted to call out the, the oak trees and the habitat being planted around the, around the creek and, and the layouts that work very good there. I wanted to call attention to Commissioner or the planning commission's good work in reviewing this project and giving it a thorough overview. Making, I wanted to call attention to the requirement to make sure that the crosswalks across Collier Canyon are as safe as possible, given that is the direct route to all of the future area in the heritage project and other, well, the transit center. So we want to make sure that's as safe as possible. I believe staff will be able to do that for their own requirements that are already in existence today. Last thing I wanted to pay attention to was just that this is the site for a future bridge that goes over to the freeway to the south in our bike master plan. So making sure that the arrangement of the park area on the southwest corner of the property accounts for a bridge maybe being there in the future to get people safely to job sites on the other side of the freeway. We know that Isabella is not the most friendly intersection or interchange to walk across. And with that, those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay, customer Wong?
I appreciate Mayor Marchand for starting his questions with reminding us what low income and very low income means in Livermore. And if I were to put my former school board hat on, that is a lot of the jobs that are of, of the people who work in our school district, including many of our teachers. And so if you think about the occupations of people who would be, are excluded from being able to afford homes in Livermore, it, it's so important. And I did ask staff, well, what happens if we don't approve this? And we say we don't want to accept these waivers and we don't approve it. He said, it'll get built anyway because of the state law, it just would delay it. And I just can't delay such needed housing in our community for something that will be built anyway. And I appreciate that we've, I know staff has spent a lot of time working with the developers to make this project worked, work as best as it can within the, the constraints that we have. And I, I think that's a very important approach rather than saying no, and then we'll delay, then it'll get built anyway and without our input. And so I, I just want to thank staff and the developers for working together in Cornerstone, of course, for all working together to make this a project that will really benefit so many people in our community who need housing.
Do you hear the comments? So I think it's also important to recognize that, as was pointed out during the staff report, this is exempt from CEQA. So CEQA is used to delay a lot of projects because the idea is, is if you can delay it long enough, you'll kill it. And this is exempt from CEQA. And the fact that, I, just a riff on Councilmember Dunbar, the stigma of, of making only a hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. That's, that's quite a bit more than a, a teacher makes here in Livermore. And I think teachers do a remarkable job. My wife was a teacher. And so I understand the great work that goes into that. And to suggest that having a bunch of teachers living in, in an area would be a stigma. I know that there were, we had a Habitat for Humanity project here in Livermore. And I think over a third of the people that bought into that project were Livermore teachers. And I'm not going to mention what the project was, but nobody ever associated that with stigma. That was, I thought it was a great plan. It was a great, great development. So I applaud the efforts that are reaching out to the people that do serve this community. And this is, this is exactly what we need. I, I don't associate this with a stigma at all. This, these are people that serve our community. These are our teachers. These are our, the people that, that work in the, in the service industry. They're the community service people that work with our police and fire. And I, I applaud the work that they do, the people that serve you your food in a restaurant or the teacher children in a classroom. So we need those people here and we don't want to have them stuck in the Altamont for a couple of hours each day. We want them here teaching our children. So with that, are there any other comments from the council? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the staff recommendation.
Okay. Motion made by Councilmember Dunbar.
Yeah.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Branning. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? See the public saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Is that aye?
That's aye opposed.
Oh, I was going to say if you vote aye, that's, that's affirmative. Okay, so vote is four in favor and one against. So the item passes. Moving on to matters for consideration, this is creation of a city ad hoc committee, subcommittee for the planning commission interviews.
Yes, Honorable Mayor Marchand and members of the city council, this is once again your city manager, Mariana Marashiba. And item seven point one, we have a presentation that our city clerk, Debbie Elam, is going to present. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. The item before you is the creation of a city council ad hoc subcommittee for planning commissioner interviews. As of March first, twenty twenty-five, there will be two vacant seats on the planning commission. City staff conducted a recruitment from December thirteenth, twenty twenty-four to January twenty-seventh tonight at five o'clock and received a total of seven applications. City staff reached out to the community over a variety of ways, including social media, the independent newspaper, the school district's Peach Star digital flyer program, posters downtown and the city's website. Candidate interviews are scheduled for March third at five P M. Members are limited to serving two consecutive four-year terms, after which they can be appointed to the planning commission again after a two-year break, which is consistent with the other advisory bodies. Preferences for at least two members to have demonstrated ability in design, architecture, landscape, landscape, architecture or a related field. Staff recommends the city council appoint an ad hoc subcommittee to review and select interview questions that will be asked of candidates. And since only seven applications were received, staff recommends that all candidates be interviewed by the entire city council on March third. And that completes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Any questions for the city clerk? Does anybody wish to volunteer for the ad hoc subcommittee? I'll, I'm going to take one place.
Can I just clarify? The ad hoc committee is just going to create the questions.
Right.
But we're all interviewing all the applicants.
Yeah, we will be interviewing all the applicants.
I would say Dunbar, Councilmember Dunbar, if you would like it, since you've been on the planning commission. Otherwise, since I've been on, I'd be happy to serve. So, but I'd be happy to give it to you for the opportunity.
Well, you're in the planning commission too.
Yeah, so that's.
This is more recent.
I would be happy to. I've been, it's fresh. I've been already thinking about questions that I'd be interested in. So.
Okay, all right.
I would, I would volunteer.
Well, tell you what, since you both have been on the planning commission, how about the two of you do it? All right, since you, since you've done the job, you have a better, better sense.
I will do my very best to make sure the questions elucidate the differences between candidates.
Very good, okay. Excellent. Well, in that case, I would defer to the two of you.
All right.
So is this something I need a motion on?
You do, and I need to tell you that there's no public comment.
Oh, okay.
Please.
We'll take a public comment?
There's no public.
Okay, I thought you said there was. All right, sorry. Okay, so public comment period is closed. And bring it back to the council. With that case, I will make the motion to, as members of the subcommittee, Vice Mayor Branning and Councilmember Dunbar. You have a second, oh, second by Councilmember Barrientos? Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That passed unanimously? All right. Moving on to council committee reports and matters initiated. Councilmember Dunbar?
Just got back from Sacramento with Councilmember Wong, three days with the League of California Cities for new council member training, some of that I was familiar with being on the planning commission. And some of it was new to me, good social media practices for council members and ethics training, of course, being a requirement, but also good to get a refresher and have it in person rather than online. It was good to meet new council members from all over the, well, northern part of the state, I guess, including from my hometown and get their input and a little bit of what they were dreaming of in their term of office. And other than that, just the, I was the, the one person being, being honored and doing the honoring at the, at the recognition of committee members a week or so ago or Thursday before.
Civic appreciation.
That we were all at. Yes.
Councilmember Wong?
As Councilmember Dunbar reported, I also attended the new council member academy where we learned about, or attended many sessions over two and a half days on ethics, finance, governance, law, land use and policy. I want to thank our city attorney and our assistant city manager for spending three days with us and giving us kind of the Livermore flavor of things, which is very helpful. I continue to do onboarding meetings. I'm starting to attend meetings of my committees and which have been very interesting. I just came from my first Tri-Valley Transportation Committee at Council Board Meeting. I want to just mention a couple of special things I got to do in the last couple of weeks. The Patterson Ranch Trail has been opened by L R P D, which is, I don't know, in my district, but it's, if it's not in, it's very close to. And it's off a Royal Road, really beautiful vistas and a pretty easy hike. I also was, had an opportunity to attend the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Open Mic Celebration at San Ramon City Hall, which was put together by the San Ramon Valley Diversity Coalition. It was really great. There were speakers ranging from very young elementary school students who spoke with no notes. It was super impressive, all the way up to adults. Councilmember Dunbar and I, I think maybe almost all of us attended the Through the Grapevine Tri-Valley Rise Small Business Networking event at Bang Head Theater, which was really amazing. I don't know if I've, I've been to a lot of events at the Bang Head. I don't know if I've been at one with that many people. It was a little scary at one point to look around and feel like, wow, I'm being just hemmed in by people everywhere. And I think that's it. Everything else is in my report.
Councilmember Barrientos?
Well, I went to my first stop waste committee and somehow my hand raised up to be on recycling committee too. So it was a real short committee, a meeting and appointed members to this recycling board. And that was it. Got to sit at a nice round table.
Vice Mayor Branning?
Thank you. All right. So first of all, Tri-Valley Rise was an amazing event, a ton of fun. Unfortunately, even though it was late, I had to go to work halfway through it. But had a great time when I was there. I also was in Sacramento, although no one else saw me there because it was for the housing community and. I also was in Sacramento, although no one else saw me there because it was for the Housing Community and Economic Development Policy Group for Cal Cities to report out to the council and staff. There was a lot of interesting information, but the biggest thing that I think is most important is for this year, the committee is really focused on the economic development piece. So from future meetings, I should have information to bring back. We've spent a lot of time on housing, and I think we have gone back and forth on that enough. But changing a different act will give a very productive, I hope, year for that committee. I do have a couple of question for staff and then potential matters initiated. So first, I just wanted to check with staff. I've been hearing a number of reports of people really just feeling uneasy and unsafe from, you know, changes in immigration's policy and enforcement. I believe the city already has put out a statement about this in the past. And we are, you know, making sure that we are, you know, following California law and making sure that this is a safe and welcoming city. But I just wanted to ask of staff if possible, if we can look at, you know, reinforcing that message, perhaps, sending it out again. I'll, I'll leave it to staff on exactly how we do that. But really just making sure our community knows that really we are a safe and welcoming community, and everyone is welcome in Livermore. Is that something?
Through the mayor, yes, Vice Mayor Branning, we can look at ways to reinforce that message that, as you said, was previously posted and circulated.
Alright, thank you. And then I was having a conversation the other day, and I wanted to bring up a option to kind of change. We normally have a norms and values meeting, and I was given an idea of really altering the form of that. We have a council that's relatively new. You know, we have two new members and two members who've been on for two years now.
And one that's been here forever.
I, I won't do the average for all of us, but the average for the other four of us is not. And so the idea came up of doing a norms and values meeting, but really doing it as a norms and values and a, like, team building, how we work on the dais kind of workshop for all the members to really get together and kind of understand how do we work with each other the best possible? How do we communicate on the dais? You know, how do we communicate in public? And then really, and then, you know, reinforcing our norms and values of how we work together. And so I haven't talked to other members of the council about this, so I'm throwing it out kind of blind as a matters initiated to ask if staff thinks it's appropriate to do something akin to that in, say, around March-ish. Would that be an appropriate ask first of staff?
Miss, through the mayor, Vice Mayor Branning, first of all, thank you for talking to me about this. As per our rules, we're supposed to have those conversations just to make sure that staff's time is available. We could certainly foresee certain changes to our rules. The city attorney and I have been recently in discussions about certain modifications. So it would be appropriate to be, bring your rules back, whether it's in a context of a workshop that would be more time consuming or a regular council meeting where this item could be agendized. We would seek your direction. Staff preference from this time standpoint would be a regular council meeting, and this could be a regular agenda item where we bring changes forward.
Okay, then with staff preference being as a regular agenda item, I don't want to put extra work on staff. Then I would put as a matters initiated, just bringing this back as a regular agenda item for a future meeting. Does that work for other members?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. That's it for me.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, of course, we all attended the civic appreciation dinner. And it's remarkable the number of, of people and the number of quality people that we have that are willing to step up and serve this community on our advisory bodies. I also is that a dedication and presentation for the oldest parachuting club in America. And that's the California Parachute Club. They've been around for over fifty years here in Livermore, and a great bunch of folks. And they had a dedication ceremony at Elevation L V K down in, at the airport. And we also had a ribbon cutting with the Chamber of Commerce to welcome a new business downtown at the old French dip place. And it's called Tacos Livermore. Fabulous, so give it a try. And with that, that's what I have to report on. So with that, we go to the open forum. Now, at the last open forum, we had a speaker that caused some disruptions. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna move him to the end. And if there's anybody else that wishes to speak, we're gonna move those, those forward. So do we have anyone which is to speak at the open forum?
Yes, Sir Mayor, we do. We have three speakers. Greg Scott, followed by John Freeman and Philip Brown as one speaker, followed by Mary Perner.
Good evening. I'm Greg Scott. January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, it's International Holocaust Remembrance Day. Eighty years today ago, Soviet troops went into Auschwitz-Birkenau to a situation that was beyond any nightmare imaginable. Auschwitz-Birkenau was one of the six Nazi death camps in Poland. So I read a poem from, from that time. It's from Pastor Martin Ni Mule. And it's titled First They Came. First they came for the communists, and I did not speak out because I was not a communist. Then they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak for me. Well, I'm not gonna be silent, and I'm not going to forget. One, oh, more than one point one million were killed at Auschwitz-Birkenau. It was two camps. Actually, Birkenau was the newer, larger camp. Of those, one point, more than one point one million, more than one million of those were Jews. The Nazis killed six million Jews, over twenty seven million in the Soviet Union died in this war. Last week, Elon Musk is at a post inaugural assembly, and he gives two Nazi salutes. Not one, but two. Then Elon Musk goes to Germany. He supports a party there called the Alternative, Alternative for Germany Party. It's a right-wing, anti-immigrant, anti-Semitic party. It has nineteen percent of the polling. It is in second place for the snap elections coming up in Germany. This is insane. We, we, we can't do this again. I don't get it, because in America, there wasn't hardly one block where somebody didn't lose a father, a son, a brother in the war in, in World War Two. So, you know, the chant of the Holocaust is never again. What is going on in Gaza? This is, oh, genocide. Tens of thousands of children killed and maimed. We're repeating this all over again. It's beyond comprehension. And why are we so silent about it in America? I don't understand this.
The next speakers are John Freeman and Philip Brown, followed by Mary Perner.
Good evening, Mayor Marshawn and fellow members of the council. My name is John Freeman. I'm a district manager with California Water Service. I'm here with Rob Sealy, who's our regional government affairs and community specialist, and Philip Brown, who's our district superintendent. Newest, newest to the, to the position of superintendent, but he's been Cal Water for seventeen years, so. Anyways, we're here to talk about our fire hydrant maintenance program. We've had some customers that have called our office and was curious about what we've done for fire hydrant maintenance. Some of your constituents have also called and asked questions from the city staff. So we thought what a better way just to come in and address the city council and just give you guys an update of what we've been doing and some of the things that we've been planning. So with that, I'm gonna turn that over to Philip Brown.
Thank you. The first item I want to discuss is our infrastructure improvement plan. Nine years ago, California Water Service began an aggressive campaign to fortify its distribution system. The thorough assessment was completed, vulnerabilities were identified, and a plan was crafted to improve the reliability of our infrastructure. Some of the key items that we addressed was replacing the aging infrastructure of our water mains, enhancing galvanized and undersized domestic services for the customers, and also upgrading smaller pipes to improve system performance and reliability. We also made a myriad of improvements to our pump stations, including the replacement of water storage reservoirs, pumps, and boosters, and also a myriad of treatment facilities to address current concerns we have like PFAS. Next item I want to discuss is our wildfire hardening initiative. In twenty nineteen, California Water Service evaluated the capacity and the capability of our water system to respond to wildfires. And a few measures were proposed to mitigate potential risk. Of the program analysis, the Hanson Project was born. We installed an interconnection zone between the seven sixty and a six ninety zone. This connection gives California Water Service the ability to supply water to avoid the vulnerable pressure zone in a distribution system in event of an emergency outage. Another initiative was the Concanon Project. The evaluation process helped California Water Service to identify that we only had one connection between two critical pressure zones. A water main was currently, or is currently being installed that will give us a second critical connection point between the two zones and greatly increase our ability to move water from one zone to another.
Okay, if I could just step in for a moment. So Mr. Freeman spoke for one minute, and then he handed it off. So actually, there's two different speakers here. So if you could give Mr. Brown an additional minute. This is, this is extraordinarily important information because one of the things that we, that a lot of people believe is that the hydrants were malfunctioning down in the, of the L A wildfires. The problem was hydrants were working fine. The reservoirs ran out of water because the, the system wasn't designed to have a hundred fire hydrants blowing five hundred gallons a minute. So continue, please.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to briefly go over our hydrant inspection process, we yearly visit every hydrant in our distribution system, and we do an inspection for the paint condition, the visibility of valves, make sure they're accessible in case we need to quickly isolate one. We do an inspection of the bolts, make sure they're not corroded, and make sure the hydrants are positioned in the correct orientation so firefighters can quickly hook up important equipment needed to combat a fire. We make sure the hydrants are accessible at the proper height, they're visible, they have bollards when needed. They have street markers so they can be identified at nighttime by firefighters responding to an emergency. And we do an visual inspection of all components to make sure they're in place and accessible. And to contrast that between our maintenance program, the maintenance program is more of a hands-on approach to fire hydrants. We make sure that we install street markers, we replace the bolts, we do the adjustments, we reese the bolts. And just to briefly go over our hydrant maintenance program, there are more inspections, there are more upgrades we've done to our system, and we just want to give you guys just a quick overview of what we have done and also make ourselves available if further comment is wanted by the council or anyone in the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that was, I, I know that, yeah, having worked in the water industry myself, I know that you guys exercise the valves routinely and do flow tests on the hydrants routinely as well. So just the question of, of maintaining the distribution system. So thank you very much for what you guys do. Thank you.
The next speaker is Mary Perner.
Good evening, Mayor Marshawn, council members and staff. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I'd like to address an issue that touches the heart of who we are as a community. And Vice Mayor Branning, you will appreciate this discussion. How we can ensure that every individual, regardless of where they came from, feels safe, supported, and valued in our city. Our city has always been a place where people from different backgrounds, cultures, and experiences come together to build something extraordinary. Immigrants contribute to our economy, enrich our culture, and strengthen the social fabric of our community. Yet too often, they face unnecessary obstacles, whether it's fear of discrimination or confusion over their rights. As a city, it's our responsibility to provide clear, accessible information about immigration rights and to foster an environment where everyone feels safe and supported. One of the most common challenges immigrants face is navigating unfamiliar systems, especially when it comes to understanding their legal rights. Questions about immigration laws, eligibility for services, and pathways to citizenship can feel overwhelming. No one should have to figure these out. They are critical issues, and they should not have to do it alone. Our city can play a vital role in providing support by ensuring that everyone has access to accurate and up-to-date information. By expanding the resources available through the Livermore website, we can create a central hub where immigrants can easily learn about their rights and the services available to them. This could include multilingual guides, step-by-step instructions for legal processes, and links to trusted organizations offering free or low-cost legal aid. These tools would make life easier. They'd empower individuals and families to make informed decisions, helping them feel more secure and confident as they build their lives in our community. I'm aware of people who feel afraid to ask for help or report crimes because they're worried it could lead to trouble for themselves or their families. That's heartbreaking, because no one should live in fear in the place they call home. We need to work together to create an environment where everyone feels safe, where law enforcement is seen as a partner, not a threat, and where people feel they can turn to someone who cares. This is about treating every person with dignity. I want us to think about what it means to be truly welcoming someone. It's not just about policies or resources. I'm sharing this today because I believe in our city and its people, and I believe in the power of community. Thank you.
Just under the wire. And that was one of the things. So Joshua Neal was Robert Livermore's foreman. And in his diaries, he, Livermore was, was an immigrant. And in his diaries, Joshua Neal wrote that Livermore would order his vicaros to go out into the countryside looking for immigrants. And that was the term that Neal used, looking for immigrants. And they were under orders to ride up to them, determine their needs, and then bring them back to the ranch to ensure that they had the resources they needed to complete their journey. And that was, that's, that's our namesake. And as I've said many times, I believe that that spirit of kindness and generosity continues to exist in the DNA of our community to this day. So I'm very proud of that, and thank you, Mary, for bringing that up. Thank you.
And that concludes open forum.
Okay. Alright, thank you very much. There being no further business, meeting adjourned.